Five, I believe that's the official time, Mountain Standard Time. School board members, good to see you. I think Ms. Demacary will join us. But this is September the twenty second. And welcome to all those that are coming online. We appreciate you being here. This is a study session of the board and I'll call it to order now. And we will begin with a roll call. And let's start us off, Sandra Kidman.
Sandra Kidman here.
Thank you.
Ed Franklin.
Desiree Fowler, Board Clerk.
Okay, thank you. And De McCleary, as I said, should be joining us. Mr. Superintendent, we've got it. We've got to hear your voice.
Right here. Good evening.
All right, good evening. Good to have you in the house. And we've got Lynn Hoffman joining us with several presenters tonight. We've got a full agenda. And so I think we need to get this going. Again, this is a work-study session and we'll just kick it right off. The first item, presentation, Google Classroom, Ryan Pelosi, you have got it.
Mr. Wallen, Board Members, thank you guys. Again, I was here, seems like a while ago, but my name's Ryan Pelizzi and I'm actually now teaching Social Studies at the Middle School, sixth grade. Before that, I was the remote learning mentor representative from Desert View. I was asked by Mr. Wallen a couple of weeks ago to kind of give you guys a Google rundown. And I think today he wants me to nail down Google Classroom a little bit more specifically. So that is what I'm going to show you today. I'll tell you guys that I ran a few different trainings for our substitute teachers in the district about similar things and it took pretty much the entire day. And I'm going to try to keep this brief to about fifteen minutes. If there's anything that you guys want more information about, please just stop me and ask. I'm happy to do it. I'm happy to stop and take any questions. I am going to roll through it pretty quickly. Obviously, you guys don't have to run your own Google Classroom. You just kind of want to see what's going on. So I'm just going to kind of go through some things quickly. So if I have the permission to share my screen, hoping I can do that. I've never, never shared my screen on Zoom before. Are you guys all able to see my screen right now? All right, I'm hoping so. Cool. No one said no, so. All right, so this is our Google Classroom homepage. Obviously, for me, it looks a lot different just because I am a teacher in a lot of different classes. I was made a teacher on all of the Desert View teachers' classes. So those are still on here, but all of the teachers at the high school and middle school, they're going to have each of their periods broken up into different Google Classrooms. And that, for that reason, we're using the Google Meets for that one specific time period. So right now you can see at the middle school level, I'm going to zoom in so you guys can see this. For the middle school, we have our timeframes on our Google Classroom, just as a reminder to the students of when they need to be going to each of those classes, as well as the periods marked on there. And I'm sure things are being done similarly at the high school. The student's view is going to look similar to this. At a middle school and high school level, they're going to have all their tiles for all of their different classes. There are ways to archive classes and kind of store them if they were in Google Classrooms from previous years. But all of their classes for the current year will show up. At Desert View, I know that the students have their one main Google Classroom page and they'll also have other tiled, other tiled classrooms for their specials classes, which they go to once a week. So most of our students have a good number of these classes. And I can definitely tell you guys that the, some of the trouble, especially at Desert View, that we've been having is just navigating between these. Just because if you can look here, I got second period from eight eighteen to eight fifty-six. And then five minutes later, the kids need to be over here in third period. So as you can see, there's a lot of navigating between different things. I know that this is going way more seamlessly than it was before, especially at the elementary level. But this is something that takes time because, like I said, the kids are kind of having to bounce back and forth between a few different things. So like I said, this is the main page. This plus button up here is how you create or join a class, depending on the permissions that you have for your Google account. You're able to create or join. Obviously, the students are just joining a class. This is the page that they get. This is the class code that they put in at the beginning of the year. But obviously, at this point, most of our students are already enrolled in a class. So I'm going to go ahead and take you to, I have a lot of examples I can show you guys. This is a little bit bare bones, just because I just started teaching Social Studies at the middle school. So this is going to look a little bit more simplistic. But this is our Google Classroom main page. This is what it's going to look like, no matter what. It's pretty much always going to look like this. I know, like I said, at the middle school and high school level, we have the time periods for those classes posted on here. And then obviously, the title with the periods specified on there. Class code is always visible right there. And then this Google Meet link for each class is how the students are getting to class every day. Obviously, at the middle school and high school, it's looking a little bit different than it is at Desert View. Desert View, they're staying on with that teacher pretty much the entire day unless they're going to specials. Teachers are able to customize these backgrounds. You'll see a lot of different ones. Some teachers have added some animation, making things a little bit more engaging for the students, which is cool. On this left-hand side, kind of just walking you through this main page. This is the stream. I should mention that. The stream is, I think, the best way to think of the stream is like a Facebook page where your most recent events just come first. This is where teachers are posting daily learning intentions. And like I said, I'm going to show you plenty of those examples. I'm going to kind of be bouncing back and forth between a few. I'll go ahead and show you a high school level thing right here. Like I said, this is the, kind of like the main page of the classroom. Not many assignments are getting posted to the stream. They might be linked to the stream. But those bulk, the bulk of those things are living in this classwork tab. Again, you can see the success criteria, the agenda for the day, the expectations of asynchronous time is usually posted on here too, as well as the learning intentions. This is a spot for, for quick announcements that the students need to get information for. If the internet ever goes down, this is a great place to toss in to the stream. Hey, guys, you know, my internet's not working today. I need you to do this, this, and this. It's more of an announcement section than anything else. But assignments are also linked when you show up here as well. Like you guys can see on mine, I posted a few different things and it's just, it's like, I post as a reminder. On this left-hand side, for each class is the upcoming assignments that are becoming due for the students. One of the things that has been challenging is this will, this section right here will only show what is due for that class unless the students go to a different page to see all of their work. So I know that that's one of the things that's been challenging for the students. It's just navigating all of the assignments that they have due, just because they are in different Google Classrooms. There are ways to do that through Google Calendar, but that is one of the things that, some of the feedback that I've heard. Am I going too fast? Are we doing okay?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So have you introduced kids to the Google To-Do List? Because that, for me, as a parent, was an absolute revelation. There's a To-Do List that a student goes to the Google To-Do List in classroom. It shows all their assignments, no matter.
Yes.
If it's classwork, bellwork, because that seems to be the easiest things for kids to navigate, what they're actually, to find all their assignments in one place.
Yes, so there is a few, what you're speaking of is these sections right here. There are a few different ways for the students to organize what assignments they have. Just being honest with you, I've been at Desert View for the majority of my time with all this. And I know that the students only pretty much have one section of material that they have to organize. But it goes back to a lot of our app strategies with the, I think, the calendar and the To-Do List, what you were talking about. I'm going to have a ton on here just because I'm in a ton of different classes. But this is where, as you were speaking, the students are able to see all of their assignments that they have due. This is a new feature. This was not here in the past. Google is always updating these things, so it is nice to see that they have that option now. Again, like I said, the calendar is something that I'm going to be pushing my students to do. And I know that we're working on at the middle school a lot. I can't speak to the high school, but I'm sure that these students are being, are using this calendar option. And the nice part about Google is it all syncs and communicates with itself. You know, if you're on your Gmail, you guys might know this. If you're on your Gmail, on the right-hand side, you can pull up your calendar. And the students can do the same thing where they're seeing what they have going on that day, what assignments are due that day in their Gmail, and they also are able to access that through here. One common theme that I've kind of been saying in any training that I've done is if you have an objective in Google, if you're trying to accomplish anything, there's probably five or six different ways to accomplish the same task. It's just about ease and then it's about how the students are going to do that and how you're going to train them to do that. So yeah, there is a lot of ways, the To-Do, the To-Review and the calendar are all different ways that the students can track and monitor what they have coming up. So that's pretty much the stream. Like I said, the majority of what the kids are using the stream for is just to get to this Meet link. At the middle school level, we are also posting office hours as a separate Meet link, which is going well just because you can't really open, I have six periods during the day. I can't open six different Google Meets and track who's in what. So we have one common office hours link that we're using for an hour and a half each day to do small groups and work one-on-one with students, get students caught up, things like that. And that's where this is, at least for me, posted is in this section of the Google Classroom. But again, that's the stream. I'm going to take you guys over to the classwork section and I'll show you a couple of different examples. This, these are topics on the left-hand side and these are being organized differently across our entire school district. I know at Desert View, things are getting betterly, better organized. At the middle school and high school, I am, one of the things that I've heard from students, just because I work with high school students for coaching, is they're having a really tough time navigating how these things are being organized. Just because, you know, for me, I'm posting material by week. And obviously, I've only been with my students for one week at the middle school. But I'm posting materials by, by week. So this is all the stuff that we did this week and going to do this week. I have my links and then obviously, I missed the first month with my kiddos. So I have all of our first month stuff that they were working on before. I'm going to show you, I think, probably the best way to do this. I'm going to show you a third-grade teacher who's organizing hers in a different way. So it might look like a lot, but you guys have to know that there's just so much. Everything with their school is in this. I really like how this third-grade group is doing it. And what's nice is all of the third-grade teachers are doing this the exact same way. What they will do is, for this current week, so this week is obviously the twenty-first and twenty-second, they will move this topic to the top so that students are not having to scroll all the way down to get the material that they need. So Tuesday stuff's right here, Monday stuff's right here. Then when this week is over, they will create a new topic similar to what you see here and then organize the material and kind of drag it down, drag it up. You are able to move these things around. And I think that's really helped some of our younger kiddos, just tracking some of where these things are. Because as you can tell, I mean, this is a third-grade class and there is a lot of stuff on here. So we had, we had to decide, and I think the third-grade team did the best job that I've seen, organizing all this material. And you can add these emojis, which I think really helps, honestly helps the kids engage with it, something as simple as that. Any questions about that? I think one of the biggest things, like I said, that I'm seeing is just the way that we're organizing some of these things can be, it was one of the things that was loose in our tight and loose document for Google Classroom. And I know some of the high school kids, it's just, it's organized in different ways. And hopefully, by now, these students, especially at the high school level, are figuring some of these things out. But that's just one of the things I wanted to share is, there's a lot of different ways to do it. I do like how this one is organized, especially because, you know, we're two months into school. We have a lot of content that's been, that's been given to the kids. So that's the topics. Like I said, you can move and drag these around. Again, here's the Meet link, the Google Calendar link, and then all the Class Drive folder, all the material that's been posted. It organizes them into Google Drive as well. When the teachers are creating assignments or posting things, they have a few different options. An assignment is just going to be a straightforward assignment. I'll get to that in a second. A quiz assignment is going to link to a Google Forms. A question is more for a discussion, a quick type of discussion. And then material is for useful links, classroom links that the kids might be using every day, or videos. And then you also have the option to create a topic here as well. I'm going to show you guys really quick what assignments look like. I'm going to go back to mine again. This is on the left-hand side. This is the main menu. I have a million classes in here. The students do not have this many. So I posted my first assignment for my kids, my Social Studies kids yesterday. And you can tell on the left-hand side what type of assignment it is based on the icon. And again, those icons are right here. The material one just looks like this, quiz assignment and assignment. So this was the first assignment that I had the kids do. I'm all about UDL and making different types of assignments. So I, and this is being done a lot, and I think that's one of the biggest benefits of using Google Classroom and our Google Resources, is it's so easy to differentiate. It's so easy to create universal-designed lessons for kids to then make choices as to how they're going to show what they learned. So I had a quick introduction that I went through with my kids and then they just had to choose whether they were going to do a Google Forms to show me what they learned or a Google Slides. But what's nice about this is you can view who's turned what in, who's done what thing. I can tell who's done a Google Slide, who's done a Google Form. I also have the link to the Google Form right here. This one looks a little bit different just because the students had the option to choose one of the two. And this hasn't, this is due Friday, so the students haven't quite finished it yet. But what's nice is when you are creating an assignment, so I go to Create Assignment. This is what the teachers are doing almost every day. When you go to, I'm just going to add something on here so you guys can see as an example of how the teachers are doing this. Because this is one of the coolest things that you can do with Google Classroom. I'm going to just show you with a practice slideshow that I just randomly found. The teachers are going to give it a title, give it instructions. You're going to have the option to add all kinds of things on here, files from your computer, Google Drive, things that are saved there, YouTube videos for reminder lessons. This has an exclamation mark on it just because I don't actually have access to post this material. But what I can do, and these three options, I think, are one of the most important things about all of Google Classroom, is the options that you have when you're giving kids assignments. So this is a Google Slide. It could be anything, a Google Doc, a Google Sheet, Google Form. Maybe not a Google Form, just because that's a quiz. But for Google Slides, I think Google Slides is what I use the most. If I have the option checked here to, and this is the default, for students to view the file, they're just going to be able to look at it. So this option is mostly for direct teaching and direct instruction-type thing, lectures at the high school level, things like that. If you choose this one, Students Can Edit File, that's going to be, all of the students that you send this to will be able to edit the same document, which teachers get scared to do, I'm going to be honest with you. But just because all the kids will be working on one thing. But if you're able to successfully facilitate group work, this can go really well. You know, you can assign one specific thing to one group of kids. Or if you design a lesson that has different levels attached to it, you can scaffold that and assign that content to the specific kids at their level. So that's really nice, a really nice feature that I'm hoping we use a little bit more as people get a little bit more comfortable with this platform. And the final one on here is make a copy for each student, which is basically just going to give it to them as independent work. So I like to think of this as direct instruction, group work, independent work. And then these three options, like I said, are some of the most important things that you can do in Google Classroom. What's so nice about what I'm doing is I have five periods of Social Studies and I'm teaching the same thing five times. I don't have to go to my separate classrooms and post them separately. I have the option of posting the same assignment to all of my Social Studies classes, which is really, really nice. I can select all of them. I don't have to do it one at a time. And then from there, once, once I have one selected, I'm able to select which students are able to see and work on that. So if I have these, these five students right here and they're at one skill level and I want to have them collaborate on something, I can go, Student Can Edit File, and I'm just going to send it to these five, so just those five kids are able to work on it, which is, like I said, really great for differentiation, things like that. Points, you're able to assign point value, due date, and then put it and organize it into a topic that's already in your Google Classroom. You can schedule these things. Teachers are able to assign it directly, scheduled it, or they can save it as a draft and post it later. This is really nice for lesson planning. You don't have to post it the night that you're doing it. You can schedule it to post in the morning, so students are working ahead or seeing things that they don't need to see quite yet. And that kind of takes us to the next section on here. I'm going to skip the people one for now. The grades one, obviously, mine's going to look pretty blank because I haven't quite done the grade stuff yet. I know that this transfers very easily into Power School, which is obviously where we're keeping most of our grades. You're able to see all your students for that class, what they're missing, what they have done, what they've turned in, what they've turned in late. I know that one of the big things that we're working on the kids with is, you know, they'll do the assignment, but they have to actually go turn it in. And that's a video that I actually had to make and we had to send it all to, tell the students because they're sitting there saying, oh, I did it, but they actually have to physically go in there and turn it in. But you are able to track their work in real time, which I think is another one of the coolest things about this, is you're able to come in here and see in real time how each of these kids are working on each specific assignment, which is one, again, one of the cooler features about this. The last section on here is just the people section. You're able to add teachers. The admins are all on and the SATs are all teachers in these. And then the students are able to connect their parents and guardians to monitor their work through the class. One of the big things I'm pushing for at the middle school is getting, trying to get all of our parents and guardians on here as a member of their students. We're getting there. I'm trying to give it, make it an incentive. But we're getting there. What's nice about this, though, is once the students connect, or once the parents connect to their student account once, it connects to all of the classes that they're a part of. So the teachers don't have to sit here and invite all the guardians for all of their classes. Once the students connect once, they're able to, to make, to have their parents be on there for their whole Google Classroom. So that is the quick rundown of Google Classroom. That was like the fastest I could possibly try to talk. What questions can I answer for you guys? That was super fast.
Board Members, do you have anything? You parents, Desiree and Sandra, you guys are probably pretty familiar with what he's been talking about. Because you guys do all your schoolwork for your kids, is that right? I'm sorry, I can't help my.
The parents are able to get the apps.
Right, right.
Notifications, all that good stuff. I know that it can be a lot when you have like two different students, one at the middle school, one at the high school, and you're seeing all their assignments, but just holds them accountable, right?
Oh, boy, it does. Now, I do have a question. Probably, I know that all this is taken care of. But with all of the information, all the data that's being put in there, the backup system on this thing, I mean, is it bulletproof?
I think that's a, that's going to be a Brian question. I know that Google is constantly, especially right now in the remote learning world, they're constantly doing updates, improvements. I know Google Meets is getting updated very soon, kind of just sharing some of these things up. What's so nice, though, is, is Google Drive saves almost everything automatically. It's really, it's almost harder to try to lose something than it is to actually lose something. So there's a lot of backups. There's a lot of fail safes. But at the end of the day, all we really need to do is be able to connect to our kids. And I think the Google Meets has been going a lot better in the last month than the first month, just with all the, all the internet stuff and all that connected everything.
Right, great.
Pop, I have a question.
Yeah, yeah, go.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got booted off two or three times while you're doing your presentation. So I missed the part of the connecting parents to Google Classroom. How successful have parents been connecting to Google Classroom? Can you see that from your side point?
So you are able to see in each of your classes which parents have connected. The most important thing to remember, I think, and this might need to be reminded to the teachers, especially at the middle school and high school, is the parents only have to connect to their student's account one time. You don't have to connect to each class. Once the guardians and parents are connected to the student's account, it goes to all of the classes that they're a part of. And they get all of the information of the, of what their student is in class, if that makes sense.
Okay, the reason, the reason why I'm asking is because I have five kids in the district and I haven't been able to connect to Google Classroom at all. And I was wondering if I'm just, you know, if there's, you have numbers on how many parents have actually been able to connect in to Google Classroom.
I do not have those numbers. I know one of the things that I've spent a lot of time looking on Google Forms and Google Support is parents, sorry, parents and guardians are not able to directly connect to their student's class unless they have the class.
Yeah, I know. No, I understand that, but I can't, I can't even connect to my student's account.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. They have to be, you have to provide the teacher with your email and then the teacher has to send you an email. Because most emails are outside of the school district, the good, the class code thing doesn't work. So your students are having to provide the, the teachers with their parents' emails.
And I understand all that and I have done that with several teachers and it still hasn't, I still haven't been able to connect. They sent me invites and so forth and it's, so that's, that's why I'm curious. You know, is it me or are parents having problems across the board? Or how many parents do we have that want to do that, that kind of thing?
Yeah, that's a great question. I would, I would be very curious to see the numbers. Like I said, I actually spent some time today talking to the middle school leadership team about having there be some kind of contest about which homeroom class can get the most parents to connect, making it. I, I find, in my time working here, if you incentivize the students to get their parents to do something, it's way better than us at the district trying to get the parents to do something. If you say to the student, you get, you, you are the student and you get a prize, whatever it is, if your parents come to conferences or link to their Google Classroom. I find there to be a lot more success with that. So that's kind of one of the things that I was talking to the middle school teachers about today.
Oh, a little bit of extra credit. We'll do it every time with my kids. I can tell you that. If they even get as much as five points in the classroom, they will say, Mom, you need to do this. So I, I would highly support that.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we, we use Power School and that's where a lot of our teachers or a lot of our parents are seeing grades. But there, you know, like, just speaking for myself, when my parent, when I was a high school student and my parents were looking at my equivalent of Power School, they weren't able to actually see what the assignment was, how I did on it. They weren't able to see any of those things. But now, the, the parents are able to see exactly what's happening in the class. They're able to see what the students are working on. They're able to see when they turned it in and when they did it. That's huge. So the more parents that we can get connected, the, the better things are going to go and the more accountability there's going to be for students.
Okay, great. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Pelizzi, thank you so much. That was awesome. And I appreciate that. Keep, good work, right?
Feel free to send me any emails, anything you need. I'm happy to help out.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, let's, let's move on to item B, and that's Presentation. Chart Wells, Mr. Wallen, Mr. Marquez.
How are we all doing? Can we hear me all right?
Beautiful.
Perfect. Alrighty, Board Members, thank you for having me today. Please excuse me, as this is my first time presenting to the board. So I'm here just to give you a basic overview of the financials from school year 2021. And if I could start, I will show you, I'll share my screen. Here we go, share screen. All right, share. There we go. Now, here we go. What we got here is a, sorry, it hasn't had any more flair to it, but we have a basic kind of real bare, not bare bones, but breakdown of our school year, food service-wise. Let's see if I can make this a little bit smaller, that way I can get this all the way fit in. Here we go. That's here, my, oh, maybe a little bit too small. All right, apologies. All right, so starting from left to right, we're just going to go over some of our, just our meals sold. Now, I got it broken down into breakfast, lunch, summer meal, sex, adults, and all our, all our a la carte meals. So as you can see, our breakfast meals, we did a hundred and ninety-nine thousand breakfast meals. This is just regular school year, ending in the middle of March when we left for spring break. We moved on to lunch right here. We did a total of a hundred and ninety-four thousand meals. Summer meals, we about tripled our summer meals from our budget because of what happened with COVID and we were able to start our summer food program much earlier. So we ended up, that was our total meal count for starting June, I'm, excuse me, March twenty-third, all the way to the end of June. Moving down for just regular season, we have, this is how many snacks, after-school snacks we sold. All the snacks we sell for all the enrichment after school. All the snacks we sell for all the enrichment after school. These are all our adult meals that we sold throughout the year. And all the cart meals, this is basically when we broke down all the all the cart sales. And all the, um. Yeah, all the, all cart revenue and we divided it by, uh, reimbursement and that's how we get that number right there. For a grand total of four hundred and sixty-four thousand meals for last years. Uh, and please, anybody stop me if there's any questions or whatnot. We have expenditures right here in, uh, for food service. This is all the salaries, district salaries right here. Um, for everybody who was part attached to the food service. Uh, food service management, these is, this right here is the total. Some of, uh. The total sum of. Invoices to chart wells. Within this, there is, uh, the food cost minus the rebates that, uh, that are provided. Paper cost, administrative fees, uh, all the. Let's give you the salaries for our labor and my labor. And all kinds of little, uh, little bit of stuff. So there's stuff in there for advertising, training, uniforms, all that good stuff that's. Talked about in the agreement. Moving down right here, general supplies, it's just supplies that we got around for the. Five-ten account. So, you know, office supplies, uh, different, uh, little things that we got. To use for the food service. Uh, this right here is the freight for the USDA commodities. So all the. Uh, the, the allotments that we're awarded at the beginning of the year for, from the USDA, which is split between, uh, DoD produce. Come, uh, brown box commodities and, uh, this one was processed, uh, food. That's all the, the freight in it. Capital costs right here. This is all our stuff. So this has, um. Uh, upgrades for. Our POS system. This is the licensing for POS system and other. Pieces just as so. And other costs here are miscellaneous costs. So there's stuff in here where. We had to purchase, uh. Things from, for the food service department from like Amazon or Walmart or a transfer from another department. So, uh, then that's, we have a total expenditures just here. So my view, this is also coming from our five-ten account. A budget. So I look at it online through I visions and whatnot. And this is the, this is an actual, uh, hard numbers right here. Revenues, the good part right here. The beginning balance, this is what we brought, what was carried over from the eighteen nineteen school year, uh, three hundred and seventy-five K right there. This is the interest on all of that built up. Uh, food service right here. This is any, um. Money that was generated from food service, whether it was catering, all the cart cash sales. That is all put in there, uh, cash flows from all the car, adult sales and whatnot that's put in there. Other revenues, these are miscellaneous revenues. They are not accounted for in sales. Our cash sales. And down here, this is what our reimbursements that we had received. Uh, like, uh, basically checks from the federal government that received for our reimbursements. Of nine hundred and ninety-two thousand for a total of one hundred and forty thousand, I'm sorry, one million, four hundred and seven thousand dollars. And that is our total revenue that we're looking at right now. Once again, these are hard numbers that we've gotten from. Uh, I vision. So these are. Not saying actual true numbers. I don't want to put my foot in my mouth with Vindi watching, uh, but. These are good numbers that we're working with right here. And that's just a little. I guess bare bones. Once again, please forgive me as it's my first time and my information might may not be a little bit, a little, uh, light.
Now, I mean, with, with, when you start off a new year, uh, your carry, is that beginning balance, that's your carryover from the last year?
That is correct, sir. Yes.
Okay, so right now, or is, if these are, is this is all you're dealing with, your carryover from here would be thirty thousand?
Uh, there is different, I've actually got a different, uh. Sheet that I share with that has our carryover for this year. Our carryover this year is about three hundred thousand. And I don't have that on this computer right here.
That's fine, that's fine. Yeah, I just didn't, okay. And, uh, the federal reimbursement, just title one reimbursement?
I don't know if it's, would be called title one. This is, um, the USS, the USDA AD reimbursements.
Okay.
All right, that's what we got right there. Uh, I have a little bit of extra, uh, information if you all would very much like to. Look at it, which I, this is information that I share with the business office every single month of, uh. My financials that I record and do throughout the years. And if you, if you don't mind, I'll change the page right there. And I hope this is all right. I did, I failed to send this because I had to clean it up a little bit for everybody, but this is a. A spreadsheet that I share with the business office every month detailing all our expenditures and whatnot. And this is all the stuff that, all the things that cascade down into the, uh. Uh, invoices that, that I provide from chart wells. And with this, I actually have our NSLP reimbursements. There we go, uh, for the. For the, uh. For the year right there, starting from, uh, August of last year.
And then, uh, were, are, were you sharing that with us so we can see it?
I, oh, did I, I did not share, I apologize, hold on.
No, no, no problem, no problem.
Uh, give me a second here. I see it on my, on my, uh, on my computer, but I failed to share that. Hold on one second here. And then I will share screen. I apologize. Oh, we would stop share. I'm going to share a different screen right here. Oh, once again, there we go. I apologize. Here we go.
Oh, no problem.
Now, here we go. Is it moving up and down? Perfect.
Yep.
So once again, here we go. These are all their expenses with our food purchased, uh, rebates. And all that stuff. And this is what I share with the business office every single month. And we go through. What expenditures are and whatnot. Right here, we have our, uh. Our, where are they? Here we go. Our NSLP reimbursements right over here, NSLP reimbursements for every month. These come right off our claim sheets that we submit to AD every single month.
Gotcha.
And for a grand total of, uh, one point one million right there. And that's, once again, coming right off our. So at the end of the month, when we reconcile everything and we send our, uh, claim sheets to, uh, AD. This is what the NSLP reimbursements for that month should be. Cascading to this. Right here, we have. All our prepayments, deposits and whatnot. This, uh, okay, we got a little note right there. All our cart and all that stuff right there, including adult cash sales. And this is our, our catering revenue for the twenty-eight, sorry, nineteen-twenty school year. And this would be within the agreement. This is what the, uh. What the return is. And what I mean return is what the. Leftover would be from. All the stuff recorded in the agreement right there.
Okay. And remind me of the, because we get, uh, we get some of that, correct?
That is correct. That's all that goes into the, that's, that's correct.
Now show that to me one more time.
Uh, this one right here, the hundred and ninety-eight thousand?
That's it, okay. And so there's a, I know been this time of COVID and everything else, uh. I think Mr. Wallen was sharing that we got some kind of agreement where it's going to benefit both of us pretty well. Is that, is that, did I hear that right, Larry?
Oh.
Larry?
I'm sorry, I forgot. I'm supposed to pull my, my down. Yes, yeah, you're correct. Yeah, that's in the agreement.
Yeah, so that was from where? That was just between us and Chartwell or?
Correct, that's in our contract with Chartwells.
Gotcha, okay, okay.
So the guaranteed amount for our first year right here, and this is off the agreement is two hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Right.
But you have to balance that, I'm sorry, you have to balance that against the COVID nineteen shutdown from March to May. And the changes in operation and all that. So that's why it didn't come out as high as the guaranteed amount should have.
Exactly. And the big thing right here is, uh, it's a forty thousand dollar revenue deficit. So what we did is, uh, we put together a. Uh, did a. Took what the average number, daily numbers of meals were. And we had forty-one days we missed. So we had that forty-one days worth of meals. Uh, how much the total would have been. And we balanced that against the meals that we sold. That's the term I like to use with COVID nineteen. We were able to pivot very quickly. And what I mean by that is we had a lot of. A product already in-house, getting ready to come back from spring breaks. We were able to use that, reduce our food cost. I was able to reduce our staff because as a food service management company, I have that ability to reduce our staff. And we were able to move forward with, uh, uh, summer food program, the emergency feeding program.
Right.
Now with that, we did about, only about thirty-five. To maybe forty percent of the nor, meals we would have, uh, done. In the regular season. And that reduction is a forty thousand dollar reduction, which is the biggest thing. That plays into this right over here.
Sure.
So, and according to the agreement. Because it's one of those, one of those things, we didn't have like the full one hundred and eighty days, but even though we were able to, you know, maneuver. That lack of students did not allow us to reach the goal.
Right.
If that makes sense.
Sure, no, yeah, I understand. Okay, well, I will tell you, you guys have been doing a tremendous job and, 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 and like you said, I love the word pivot because you guys have had to pivot to where you're dizzy.
Yeah, it's the entire district. I mean, and so far, just.
Yeah.
Since I've been here and I've been of, uh, my first full year with the school district. Like everybody has been so helpful from Vindi and Millie and. The superintendent's and this entire school has been really great and helpful and just the way everybody picked up. And threw in their hat to help out food service when, um, with deliveries and whatnot. Last year, it was just amazing.
Yeah, staff just was, your staff was phenomenal. Ours was phenomenal. Yeah, it was really good to see the synergy.
Yeah, for sure. This year, this year is going, it started rough, but we are increasing meals. We're, uh, doing, uh. Just about a thousand meals a day. And every day that number goes up, we started offering weekend meals. And that is so far been a huge success. And the bus drivers go out every day and drop off. They do about half our, uh, our drop off. So there's about four, fifty, five hundred meals that get sent off on the buses and whatnot. And every day that number is going up. So that proves to me that every day word is getting out and we're trying our, our best to. Put that word of mouth out.
Right, great, great. Uh, board members, you have anything for Mr. Marquez? I don't hear anything. Art, you did great. Not, that's not bad for your first one. You need to get with Mr. Palisi. He'll jazz you up a little bit.
Oh, no, he's great. I love that.
No, that, that was, that was good. Appreciate it. And, uh, when you do well, we do well.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Want to make sure that happens.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, let's go to item C. Uh, that's, uh, PU SD Sports. Uh, Mr. Wallen and also Mr. Rivers.
Uh, Mr. Rivers, you here?
I am, sir.
Okay, you want to go ahead? Thank you.
Good evening, Governor Board, President Candelaria, Executive Board members, Superintendent Waller. Dr. Mauer, Mr. Rodriguez and guests, appreciate the opportunity to meet with you tonight to talk a little bit about our athletics activities and our extracurriculars. Uh, what I'm going to do is I'm going to present a plan that was developed amongst seventeen schools in the northeastern part of the state. Uh, including the, most of the schools on the Navajo Nation, uh, in Elche Say. And then also, uh, Hopi as well. And so the main authors of this document were Ryan Dotson from Window Rock. He is a three A North president, Tayyar Yazi from Valley Sanders. He is the two A North president. Carl Adams from St. Michael's, he's a one A North president, Ricky Greer, who's from Hopi. He's an executive board member for the Arizona Interscholastic Association and myself. All right, give me one minute to share my screen. So the document that I'm going to present to you is the document that was recently presented. To AI, in fact, yesterday, it was presented to the AI Executive Board. And this plan is the northeastern Arizona regional, region athletic proposal. And it was a collaboration between seventeen schools. This plan would cover January through June of twenty twenty-one. So as a group of schools, we developed a mission and a vision statement. And our mission was to. Strive to create safe and healthy educational-based athletics and activity opportunities for all of our students. And our vision was to instill the core values in our students that develop responsible adults, leading to stronger communities. Uh, we felt like it was very important to identify the reason why we were trying to, uh, gather this collaboration. So these are the schools that are involved. Uh, as I mentioned, all of them are in the Navajo Nation. Elche Say, Hopi, and then we are the only school that is a, uh, not located on, uh, the reservation. So the way that it's divided into team sports will be divided into two divisions, a small schools division and a big school division. If you have questions as I'm going through, please don't hesitate to stop me. I'm going to move through this pretty methodical, understanding that you have a copy of the plan. The individual sports will be a one division, uh, individual sports typically track wrestling. Um, and then also, uh, cross-country would be our, considered our individual sports. And then football would divided, be divided into two divisions. The reason there are not seventeen schools up there is because there are some schools that do not participate in football. And those are typically some of the smaller schools, uh, that do not participate. So these would be, be the divisions of the schools. So the proposed season, uh, for winter, it would be January fourth to March sixth for basketball. I won't go through all the particulars, but some of the things that I will point out is throughout this entire plan, uh, we've. Uh, collaborated together and decided that was very important is consider the academics of our students. And the fact that they're out of school, uh, they're doing remote learning, some are struggling, some aren't even able to access the internet on a consistent basis. So returning to school, there'll obviously be a period of time where they need to acclimate. And so in developing this plan, we took into consideration that we'll need to keep them in school as much as possible and to miss. As little education as possible. And so we've chosen to do the varsity games throughout the week and the evenings. Limiting how many, um, teams would miss during the week. And then our JV games. We typically play on a Saturday or a Friday afternoon. We also took into consideration the safety. Uh, understanding that we don't want to put fifty kids on a bus. We want to limit the number of buses. We also understand that we, at least in our school district, and I'm sure we're not the only one. Are short on drivers and also other resources as well. And so, uh, for all of the. Individual sports and the team sports, we've laid them out very similar. The team sports will all have a playoff towards the end. That will have a play-in game if needed, if there are more than eight teams. And then a round of eight semifinals and championships. The only exception to that rule would be football. Uh, football would just be a regular season. So January fourth, we took into consideration that would be our first day back. Typically, there's only about two and a half weeks of workouts before games begin, except for football. And so we also took into consideration and put a four-week period in there. And I'll show you a calendar at the end. So that our students could come back and acclimate, uh, to the exercises because we have to treat all of our students. As if they're recovering from some significant injury. Uh, the medical advisory committee for. AI, that was one of the recommendations that they gave when returning back to sports. Uh, because I am sure that there are a lot of student athletes and students in general that have not done a whole lot since March thirteenth, that Friday the thirteenth. So the next one would be wrestling. And we put this in there as if we will be able to do it. We understand that this is going to be a significant challenge based upon our current status. And our current COVID crisis. Uh, but we still felt like it was important for it to be in here. Uh, competitions would be on Saturdays, uh, again. Uh, again, this would be the one area, there's sixteen man brackets for the wrestling championship. But we also have a contingency plan that if we're unable to do this in January, we'll push it back to um middle of April through June for those championships. And again, football, we covered that a little bit. Uh, the idea for football is there'll be six weeks of play or seven weeks of play, excuse me, with six games with no postseason. It would be the winner of the regular season that would win that championship. Volleyball would be very similar to basketball, beginning February twenty second, moving to April seventeenth. Games would be played typically on Tuesday, Thursdays with the JV and freshman competitions taking place on Saturday. And then the uh, I forgot to mention that in most of these scenarios in the playoffs, the high seed would host. Uh, the plan is not to have any overnight trips. The plan is is to limit the distance of our trips. If it's a four plus hour trip, possibly meeting in the middle somewhere at a a neutral site so that we can limit how much our students are on a bus, also limit how much students are traveling and also how much risk they are at. Cross country, February twenty second to April seventeen. We went away from calling them fall sports because obviously they're not in the fall. So we've dubbed them spring football, spring cross country is spring volleyball. And then our track and field would take place April twelfth to May twenty ninth. Uh, the championship being on May twenty ninth at a site to be determined, top sixteen qualify for each event. And then Spirit Line also would have the opportunity to do competitions. We got three significant dates uh dedicated, uh typically line up with the championships. That will be also defined a little bit more in detail once we know how many teams uh will be involved. And then baseball and softball, this is the one area in which we extend a little bit further. Uh, the championship for this would be on June fifth. Again, it would be a play in game if necessary. A round of eight semifinals and finals. I'll have to review the board policies and procedures currently to look at what our seniors eligibility are. We've already spoken to AIA. They don't have any concerns with our students continuing to play because the bylaws read they're eligible until the end of the season, which means the last day for the tournament. If our season goes to June fifth, that would be the end of the our season, they would be eligible according to AIA bylaws. I will need to do a little bit of research up to this point. I've not found anything in our policies or procedures that would prohibit uh, our seniors being able to participate in the postseason. And then the rest of this is a calendar in which you can uh have a visual, I'm very visual, I know a lot of people are. So it just breaks it down in regards to when practice begins, the first competition. And then it's laid out a little bit more concretely uh in a calendar format versus a written format. And I want to emphasize that this is a plan. I know that we have quite a few people that are concerned where we are currently with our COVID crisis. This is a plan, it's an opportunity for students to have the ability to be able to practice and then compete as long as we're able to do that in a safe and a healthy manner. If we can't do that in a safe and healthy manner, we'll have another discussion sometime down the road. Do you have any questions in regards to the northeastern plan as I shared it at this point?
I I do have a question. I know it's a little bit away, but when you start in January and you consider trips and then when you're in other people's locker rooms and or or maybe you're going to choose to meet outside instead of the locker rooms. I don't know what you guys have talked about, but will there be a kind of a consistent protocol in terms of how you sanitize and various things if we're still in the middle of these kind of things, which we probably, I mean, we probably won't be out of the woods yet.
So currently, there's two documents that have been provided by AIA and the Sports Medical Advisory Committee. And so in those documents, it actually outlines the protocols for that. And in talking to a lot of my peers throughout the state, some that are currently starting competitions this weekend, some that are not starting competitions, but most of the plans are one of two things. One, there will be no access to any facilities by the visiting team. On a football field, they're going to be porta potties for the other teams to be able to utilize rather than going in buildings. The other one is a limited access, uh, and that is based upon the school's determination, five to ten players being able to access at a time. Having a what they're termed a COVID coach, being able to monitor how many students will access. Currently, in the plan that I I wrote up about a month and a half ago, there is no access to our locker rooms. And so we would provide whatever facilities they need to be able to use during competition. Uh, but we would not provide a locker room for you for use. And at this point in our first couple of phases coming back for our own student athletes, we would not even utilize locker rooms for our own student athletes until we get to phase three.
Okay. Uh, the other thing I was, I was wondering, have you addressed anything about fans in the stands or is that going to be a no-no?
No, that is also taken into consideration and we're going to we've had those conversations with the AIA and AIA has put that back on the schools. There are some schools that are having zero fans in attendance. Other, uh, the recommendations from NFHS and across the country right now is about twenty five percent of your fans being able to access.
Right.
Uh, some schools are allowing two individuals per player. They provide them a card and they must present that when they're at the gate. Uh, other areas are allowing a few more based upon what their seating capacity is. So currently, our seating capacity in the gymnasium, for example, is twenty eight hundred. Uh, if we have a volleyball game, it cuts that in half to about fourteen hundred. If we did twenty five percent of that, uh, we're not looking at a large crowd. But that's something that we will take into consideration each school. We'll take that into consideration. Other schools are saying we'll allow our home fans at a certain percentage, but we will not allow visiting fans. Uh, our thought process behind that is is we want to do everything with it contain what's going on in with our community and we can't do that when we have people coming in to visit our our facilities.
Gotcha, okay.
Any other questions?
I have, go ahead, go ahead, son. Oh, thank you. Um, I was just wondering what the parents' response to this plan has been.
So there's been varied response. There's a lot of response that are very positive and encouraging. In fact, some of them wants us to get out and start competing today. There have been responses of no, not sending my kid back regardless, we're going to sit out at least till January, maybe even longer. And so there's been varying responses in between. Uh, and that's not just within Paige, that's throughout the basically the Navajo Reservation and Elche say and Hopi. Uh, as athletic directors, we met for almost two and a half weeks straight. Two to four hours a day developing this plan, sharing information. There's another document that you were privy to, it's a memorandum that we sent out as a memo of a brief to the media. And that was where we gathered most of our information from through media posts or other things like that. So some, I wouldn't say any was real negative. I I think a lot of it was very cautious. A lot of it was very much, you know what, we're too early to plan. But again, this is a plan for a plan. We're not saying this is going to happen. We're going to say we're going to reva- evaluate things as we go, make decisions based on the data and the current information that we have instead of just making assumptions moving forward. Uh, it turns out that, uh, you know, we've made some solid decisions. I know that on Friday, the Department of Health in Coconino County met with Flagstaff and Coconino High School, and they told them that they could not compete in competitive sports until further notice. And then Northland Prep also is in that as well. And so they are currently not allowed to compete until further notice, and I'm, it is partly because of the metrics and the number of cases that were above a hundred thou- or per hundred thousand. And that's the reason they've been asked not to. Uh, currently Tucson Unified School District is not participating. Their superintendents will meet this week. They've not even scheduled games. Their superintendents will meet this week and they will make the decision on whether or not they will move forward, start practices and competitions as well within the Tucson Unified School District. Phoenix Unified School District will only compete within football with inside of their uni- their unified school district. They will not compete in postseason play this year. They will only have a city championship to limit transportation. So we're not unique in regards to a modification uh, for athletics or activities. We're unique in the fact that we have decided to look at January fourth as a starting date versus some of the other ones. Let's, let's see what happens as we go. Some of them saying, okay, we've started now, we have to pump the brakes and we have to stop for a while. And then other ones saying we're going to only do it regionally.
Thank you.
Anybody else does, does rate, did you have some?
Yeah, I have a question. Well, you did answer my question. Talk, speaking about Flagstaff Unified, because I did have a conversation with one of the board members about what they were, their plans were as far as continuing with practices and so forth, but that wasn't approved through the school board. But it was a pretty good conversation. And the other thing that I wanted to ask you was, um, you know, majority of our students compete and an example, you know, some of our athletes do utilize this athletes, um, or, you know, academically to their advantage as using it for scholarships and so forth for college. How does that interfere with um how the changes are going to be? Because I know, I'm pretty sure we've all received our letter today. Specifically, you know, AIA is my understanding. I know that this is a little bit different, but the state champ, um, the state competitions are still happening. Um, can you just clarify that for me?
So some of the state championships are happening currently in volleyball. There are twenty five percent of the schools throughout the state that will not participate throughout all levels of volleyball competition. In football, it will also happen as well. But you've got seventeen schools in the north, you've got twenty in the south, and you have Phoenix Unified School District that will not participate in that state championship. So yes, it will be called a state championship, but no, it will not include the entire AIA body. In regards to scholarships for athletes and those opportunities, I actually had the opportunity to talk to a scout and a coach down in the Phoenix area that called to get information about some of our football players. Shared the plan about the opportunity to play in the spring. They're very excited. Uh, they don't have really a whole lot except for spring football, and so they will be easily able to scout our games and to also look at our student athletes. The primary driving force behind this was to provide us opportunity for all of our student athletes. We could have said, you know what, we're just going to worry about the the winter and the spring. Give them an opportunity, but we also felt like, you know, if we're able to, let's try to get fall in there as well. If there's no more, i- is there any more questions regarding this specific plan? Because I'd like to touch base on some of our other extracurriculars real quick and then also, um, this plan unfortunately does not affect our golf team, our boys and girls soccer team, and then also our boys and girl tennis teams. And so we had to come up with a contingency plan for them. Our boys and girls soccer team and our golf team currently compete in the fall. They have lost their season according uh, and at this point, it's too late to schedule, even if we came back October twelfth because the state championships are the last part of October, the first part of November. So I recently sent an appeal and I copied in President Candelaria, I believe, and and Mr. Wallen and Ms. Martin, our principal, and I appealed for our students to have the opportunity to still be able to compete. Uh, we are able to win that appeal, so our golf team will be able to compete coed in the spring. And that'll start probably the second week in February and go to the end of April, middle of April. And then our boys and girls soccer programs have been granted one year exemption to be able to go back to the winter schedule, which I fought pretty hard to get out of. But they've readily accepted us back into the winter program so that they'll have the opportunity to compete. If conditions permit, we can start practicing November ninth. Competitions could start as early as November thirtieth. But AIA also understands that we may not be able to compete until January, uh, and they're willing to accommodate us in that regards. Tennis, we didn't have to do anything about because tennis uh is in the spring. So we're fortunate in that regard, so they would follow the typical timeline, start in the second week in February, and they would go till middle to late April, uh, the first part of May.
I do have a a question about that because I, as I, as I recall, uh, your letter, your petition letter, um, suggested that we we be part of the Northwest that is conference, and and so and we talked about travel and overnights, how is that going to impact that? And then tennis, normally they're, they're traveling down the valley for their competition.
They are, and and we may have to look at those individually and possibly make some exceptions. But in talking to a lot of the athletic directors, they're willing to accommodate earlier times so that our students won't return home so late.
Good, good, yeah, that's good.
They've been, we've been fortunate in developing some great relationships with some of those athletic directors and also the coaches. They've been very accommodating. Uh, for tennis, we're fortunate that we actually are able to play some schools up in Flagstaff. And then, um, the rest unfortunately are in Kingman and Phoenix, just because that's where those schools are located.
Right. And then the other, no, I was just going to ask if there are any comments or questions.
All right, I'd be remiss if I didn't speak on to a few more of our activities and then also some of our extracurriculars. I I'm speaking, I actually have met with quite a few coaches recently. Uh, and not all of them, but I I've met with a lot of them. And speech and debate, the the newest update for speech and debate is they're probably going virtual. And they'll have competitions on Friday, but they'll be able to submit uh, their speeches, uh, video, and they'll be able to still be able to continue to compete. I'm not, we're still trying to find out some detailed information because they've had some change in leadership. They've changed their website. So Ms. Valentina, she is wonderful, doing an incredible job. She's currently meeting with her students online, uh, and she's actually picked up a couple additional students this year, so that program's growing. Chess had already been moved to the spring by AIA. We currently are slated to host the individual chess championships. And I've touched base with Norm Cambridge, who's our new chess coach for that. So we're pretty excited about the opportunity and only our second year since Yuma was hosted it last year, so it'll be nice to host that this year. Color Guard will possibly also be able to compete remotely. We're still trying to get some more information about Color Guard uh and speaking to the coach. Uh, that was the last update and that was a couple of weeks ago, and the same with Marchy Band and WGI. We're still waiting. Marching Band season probably will not happen at this point. Um, WGI may happen, it could be remote. They're still at this point trying to develop what that's going to look like. And they're taking into consideration, I know that, uh, Mr. Johnson shared with me, they may be able to compete uh via video or remotely. And then the additional extracurricular activities will be reevaluated on return in person such as drama. I currently have had conversations in that regards. Uh, our clubs about meeting back in person currently, they're all meeting uh, via Google meets for the most part, and then other extracurriculars that will could possibly fall into that area as well. Do you have any other questions? I I hope I didn't leave anybody out. If so, I'm sure I'll get a text soon.
No doubt. Uh, board members, are we okay? Uh, Ernie, I'll just say one thing, that, man, uh, you guys have done a great job in 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 circumventing our circumstances and those kind of things. And and I know the 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 students and the schools really appreciative of that because that takes a whole lot of a whole lot of work to pull all those things together. And then I really am excited you you uh told us about chess and you told us about the rest of the extracurriculars. That's great. So thanks a lot for all that work. And I got to tell you, hands down, uh, your quarantine has led to the best beard during COVID nineteen at Page Invite School District.
Well, I don't know, there, there's a gentleman down at the middle school.
Okay.
He's, I think, a second or third year teacher, and I want to believe he's from Virginia, who has an amazing beard.
Yeah.
I I don't want to take that. This is a COVID beard. He had his prior.
I know, I know, yeah, I know, I hear you. Looking good, though, Rivers.
Thank you.
Old, but old, but good.
You know, five daughters sometimes will make you age a little bit.
Can't even, I can't even imagine.
They're amazing women, but I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Rivers. Appreciate all the work.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Uh, next up, audit, I I don't like this, I'm going to leave while you talk about all those. Okay, great. Next up, audit, I, I don't like this. I'm going to leave while you talk about all those audit stuff. I've, in my life, I've gone through too many audits. Item D, Presentation Audit Findings, Non-Compliance USFR. That's Vinda, you got the great task of letting us know the good news.
Mr. President and Mrs. Valen, today we will look at what our 90-day corrective action process will look like. So let me share my screen with you. So here, I want to let you know that the Arizona Auditor General's Office issued us with a 90-day letter due to significant deficiencies that they noted in our internal controls for the past few years. So in these deficiencies were noted in the district audit report and the USFR compliance questionnaire. So here you see, this shows you the timeline they provided, and this report is due to the Attorney General's Office on November 13th. So this corrective action process has three stages. First is the education process, then implementation and evaluation. In the education process, each department has time to research what the deficiencies were and list down the specific steps in the process. List documentation needed in the, in the each step. And also they need to mention who is responsible for each step of the corrective process. Also, we are required to state when the corrective process would, we, was implemented and implemented to correct the deficiencies. As part of the evaluation of the corrective action, Mr. Wallen, I selected as an, as the independent internal person who's not involved in these processes to conduct the evaluation process of each section. And then we certify that corrective, corrective action was implemented. In the next tabs, you'll see what each of the sections were. Here in the accounting record process, we were cited for, we were, our deficiency was coding issues. Like I've shared this with you, I think in April, when this report first came out. And in the budgeting section, it was the timelines of uploading the budget and also the timeline of when the notification of the adaptive budget was uploaded. And then in the cash and revenue section, we had a few things. Again, it was timeline issues where we, for example, we missed not stamping a deposit we received. So maybe it's a couple of the 10 they reviewed, but it was cited as a deficiency. And the, in the next section, the agreement, there was agreement, they thought, they cite, they said that we did not have fully executed a copy of the agreement. Since then, we have corrected all of these deficiencies. So we have to now share what we have done with the Attorney General's Office. And within information technology, we had, for example, we had to test our disaster recovery plan. And it, it was not tested on a timely manner is the deficiency. In payroll, there were, it was cited that out of the selection, they said, did two of the employees, we did not have I9s on file was a finding. And if you go into the procurement and credit cards, the main finding there was that we did not have signed credit card user agreements for all of our users. So, and under property, property control, for example, the one was if the capital asset addition list did not agree with the capital outlay reconciliation. So since then, we've corrected all of this. This was also, you have to remember, this was fiscal year 1819, that these deficiencies were found. And under the Student Activity Fund, we how are, actually these deficiency, we are researching these and we are in discussion with the AG's office to see if we could appeal these two deficiencies that they, they were not findings. So in the student attendance report, these are the findings and we've, in your, in the packet we printed for you, you will see all of that. For example, I can cite, pick one where this is where they reviewed four of 10 entry, four of the 10 entries reviewed, the district did not maintain sufficient variable, verifiable documentation of Arizona residency was the finding. And transportation support, the deficiency was that we did not, the first, we did not use the AM and PM average for when we calculated our student eligible, eligible students based on the first hundred days. So in each of the tabs, you'll see that we've kind of specifically stated all of the steps that we follow for these deficiencies and then the documentations we will be looking at. And the person who's responsible for each step. And the date of implementation evaluation, it will come up here in the next few weeks. And we will share with you what our results are when we do that internally and what we hear back from the Attorney General's Office. We have 90 days to correct and submit this plan to them. If you have any questions for me, sir, that will be the end.
I have a question. Can I go ahead?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Okay. You said that was for school year 1819? Remind me, when you came on board?
I came on board. It was March of 2019 is when I came on board towards the end.
So who was in charge of all this when we had all these findings?
Mr. Kevin Dickerson.
But didn't we have an interim business manager?
So that was our consultant. He was mainly tasked by the superintendent to work on budget and related then a financial report, the budget and actually the numbers, if I may say. So, but there's a lot more that ties to an audit. It's your transport, what your transportation department does. And it, you'll, say, for example, your student attendance, what's on there and your bookstore, those, there are a lot of things that was, were oversea, that was part of the superintendent's plan to him taking over some of those pieces to oversee. And Mr. Maurer was also part of the process in that year. So it, it, the lack of us not having that position filled was the part of the problem.
Okay, because I thought we, Dr. Maurer, can you answer that question? I thought you, I thought we paid you a $20,000 stipend to take care of all that.
So the, the original conversation that we had was to keep all of the parts moving, not necessarily all of this. So when we look back through this audit, you're looking at things like the attendance. The attendance isn't in a privy in this instance of the business office when it comes to the way it's calculated and all the moving parts, transportation. My role was purchasing, receiving, payroll, keeping the HR processes running forward. So a lot of these are, and I don't want to minimize it because it's not minimal, but they are correctable. And they are pieces that when you don't have a dedicated person doing that position, doing in and day out, that's some of the things that will, they will be missed.
Okay, I'm just going to flat come out with it and not beat around the bush. But this is the worst audit, audit finding that I have seen in, in 12 years. Usually we have two or three findings and they're usually very small. And this, this is just terrible. And I thought that we put you in charge and paid you $20,000 extra to make sure that, you know, this was all running smoothly. That's the impression I had back then, that we, I remember approving that stipend. And I'm just wondering what happened there.
Yeah, I would have to go back and look and see exactly what the stipend amount was. I do not remember it being at that level, but.
It was humongous. It was huge. I remember that because I was not happy with it. And I was told back then that that was going to make up for the lack of having, for the lack of a business manager that between you and the consultant, it was going to be covered.
I, I don't, ma'am, I do not have an answer for that.
Let, let, let me step in.
I would, I would like to see some more specific answers because I'm, you know, this is, this is, this is, this is really quite something.
Let, let me step in just for a second because I, I jumped in this early, just early when I realized that there were some issues. And I do, I do remember that Dr. Maurer was put in a position, although he wasn't, where he was having to correct several things in the finances himself because there was a process of discovery going on that led, of course, to Mr. Dickerson being put on leave and then ultimately let go. And at that point, there was many, many concerns in terms of where is this money? Has it been done? Has it been put properly? And, and it, and I, and I don't know the specifics between Superintendent Varner and Dr. Maurer, but they both had to share something that really wasn't their wheelhouse. And so they were scrambling just to make sure that, and I'll just say it straight out too. There wasn't any embezzlement. Funds were still there. That's what Dean came, is it, was his name Dean?
Gene, there was, there was $1.7 million.
Right, right. And so.
Yes, sir.
Well, and, and I know Terry was in a whole nother area and what brought me to it because I saw him dealing with finance. I said, hey, what's going on here? And that's kind of when we had a face-to-face meeting with, you know, something seriously wrong. And so anyway, I, and, and I know with these kind of findings, they are, this is overwhelmingly more than we've had before. And I don't disagree with you, Sondra. 100% agree. The only thing I'd want to see, instead of just saying, we did this, all of these beg one thing. A lot of them are transparency and accountability issues in our process. So when we say it's been fixed, that's not going to be good enough. What has to happen is here's the, and I'm getting a big echo and I don't know why. Who is, who's still on or something? Ed, are you, are you, you're muted?
No.
Could, could you mute real quick? Oh, there you go. Thank you. I think that was it. I'm sorry. But, but in this, the most important thing we can do right now, Vinda, you inherited something. And so, but now the responsibility to, to establish the process that will tell us that these things aren't going to happen again. That's what, that's the most important thing I want to hear. To say it's, it's fixed is not good enough. We have to say, here's the process to ensure this is not going to reoccur. So, because that's, those are the things that are really important. Once we find some, because some of these things are very alarming. When you start dealing with, we can't reconcile the cash that came in and all, all those kinds of things. That's, yeah, that's not good. So again, you've inherited something. But when we see the fix, November 13th, you're supposed to have a plan in. But then when it's resolved, then when you and your group need to say, okay, here's the steps and the processes that we are assured will not allow us to, to violate that. And again, it's, it's a process. And it's, it has to do management of change so that people take up that slack. And we're, we could say there's transparency and accountability and every, in every way that we handle money. So that's, that's my, my summary, I guess, from, from my point of view.
Well, that was the point I wanted to make also out there. And I felt this happened, I think a little bit over a year ago. So I would think we should have had a, had a plan in already by now. On a quarterly basis or something, we should have been double checking. So I would think we will have something in place way before this point.
Yes, sir. After the first audit, after I took this position, we had the audit in June of 2019. Yes, right after we found out the, the deficiencies, we did make plans and procedures, we have them in place to go through these steps and implement. So. But at this point, we have to, after, with the 90 days we've gotten, we will be reporting this to the Attorney General's Office. It's the next step, yes. If that answers your question, sorry.
Yes, yes, I did. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Sondra, or you don't feel like you've been cut off? Have you said everything you need to? Are you good? Okay. All right. I know. These are, these are always tough to, to take. And I will guarantee you, the one that sees it first, it's always the toughest for me. Because now, you know, Vinda, you're, you're on the button. And I know you had a lot thrown at you. But yeah, when we, when we come back with it, let's, let's just see the process that says, this is how we put, this, this is what we put in place so that it does not happen. So that, does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Appreciate that very much. Anybody else have anything? All right. Let's go ahead and go on to our next item, item E. That's a PUSD Employee Turnover Presentation, Dr. Maurer.
President Candelaria, members of the governing board, superintendency, good evening. I'm sorry for the lighting. I'm trying to correct that. I'm doing the best I can. Let me share my screen here with you. We're looking at the turnover. Right. So what we're looking at is the certified staff turnover. I do want to start by saying there has been a request to look at full turnover, also classified members as well. I think that is definitely something we can look at, bring together for a little bit later on. This is just the certified. So when we think about the certified staff, we're thinking about occupational therapists, school psychologists, teachers, administration, so the entire certified group. I did leave all of the historical data in from when I can find back. So you would have had Gwen Laslow as a previous human resources director. She would have produced some of this information, even people prior to her. And then I did come in, like we know, November of 2017. One of the things that was very evident and was talked about when I very first got here was the transition between the previous superintendent, the staff turnover, and how do we go about mitigating that process? We saw surveys going out. A lot of it came around things like housing. How are we recruiting? Who are we recruiting? So working over the last couple of years, you can see the turnover. And I'm looking specifically here in these areas here. So this is the total staff that separated. So in this case, we're looking at 15, 16. That trend has held well last, the previous year, we had 25. And this last year, we had 29 staff turnover. When we look at this also, I want us to remember that the governor stepped in and did his 20 by 20 promise. So when we look at this, we were thinking about the governor was going to provide additional funding up to 20% for certified staff, teachers raises. Up to twenty percent for certified staff teachers raises. Uh and so we did know right away, uh because we talked to the staff that they were. A ten percent raise was substantial and you as the governing board authorized that. Uh so we moved uh from. The this year to here and then to the next year because it was ten year or ten percent, five percent, five percent. Um we see our retirements have held pretty steady. Uh those are individuals who have reached the their. Their end of their careers uh and and decided to separate through retirement. Uh and then our non-renewals, so these would be individuals trying to work with them. Um but things just are not mutually agreeable. We can see we had one of those in this previous year. Uh one thing I do wanna call out cuz it will be a question. We noticed the trend was trending down as our our student enrollment has trended down. We see the certified staff had trended down. In this case, we see an uptick last year and the nineteen twenty. Uh this is this is directly attributed to additional uh resources allocated to Lakeview. Additional resources allocated to Page Middle School. And then we had two individuals who moved from classified to certified. So uh those are in the system um as certified staff, so they are accounted for in that way. Uh one of the things we look at is uh when they separate with PUSD. Uh how long had they been with us, right? So how long are we allowed are are we retaining our employees? Uh this trend here where we see zero to five is not. Uh a new trend for PUSD nor for the teaching profession itself. Uh getting teachers to and into the profession and maintaining them for years. Uh especially in a single district is very difficult. Uh so we see that this stays about the same over the years. Uh and then we see our employees at the other end who have been with us for quite some time as they retire out of our system. Uh actually, in the profession, this is one of the ones that uh when we go out and we recruit. Uh we're looking to recruit across the board, right? We want new teachers, veteran teachers. In this case, we see that with the with this small little nuance here. Most of the teachers leaving PUSD have about the same amount. We're losing across all avenues. So twenty plus years in the profession, six of them left uh PUSD. Seven years, eight years, seven years. So we see that that holds pretty steady for us. Uh there's not one demographic or one group that's leaving PUSD. In years of the profession. Uh the last piece is, so what are we what are we doing uh to to mitigate some of this loss? Uh because we do know that um recruit is expensive, to train is expensive. Uh and to lose employees uh is expensive. Uh so one of the things that we've heard is the amount of paperwork, the amount of stuff that people have to do. Uh in order to be hired and then in order to be maintained in our district, uh that we should automate more of those processes. And we're seeing that happening over the past couple of years. Uh instead of having to use DVDs to watch videos. They now can watch them online and it captures everything. Uh instead of the paperwork that people have to sign every year. They're able to do that online. So that's that is something that we're working on. Uh new for this year is our virtual recruiting trip. Uh we have now partnerships with a a company or a. It's a it's called Handshake. It's a platform and it allows us access to over two hundred colleges. So now, instead of us going down to ASU, we can we can be virtually in two hundred colleges posting our job. Recruit across the United States and and abroad. Uh we're going, we we've continued uh our cooperation with our in-state schools. So any individual who has a bachelor's degree and is in the is a teacher or works for us. Uh has access to a free master's degree in AU, ASU, and U of A. Uh and then anyone who is one of our paraprofessionals or an employee. Who doesn't have a bachelor's degree yet, hasn't completed it and wants to become a teacher, we can also work to get them a free bachelor's degree as well. Uh so we are currently uh working with multiple teachers on both of those avenues. The last is uh our Grow Your Own. Uh that started a couple of years ago. We're continuing that. And if you look back to the old slides, you would see we had currently four people in it as well. That's because we've actually. Taken one of our employees who's grown inside of our system, became a teacher, and we have another one that's dropped into that. So we still have four, uh but I'm I'm happy to say that we have put additional staff members uh growing through our ranks into our teaching. Any any question?
I have a question. Okay, so I don't know if it's just my slide, but I don't see any actual numbers and percentages. Can you give me those? Like I can only guesstimate on the total separated and retired. And the total number of staff, do I have a faulty slide?
So can you see my screen right now?
Yeah, I can see that, but that's not part of what I received. Why did we not receive those numbers?
So this would have been uploaded to to your Google Docs. Um I can see what that one looks like on your guys' side. But this is the same presentation on on. You know, one thing, one thing I would, um if it's downloaded as a as a PowerPoint. And then your computer converts it, it may lose some information. Um so I'd have to go back and look and see how it was put on Google Docs. Or not on Google Docs, sorry, on the governing board um agenda.
Okay, because I all I see is a graph. I don't have any actual numbers.
I I know the packet that we got, uh I believe it's from Lynn, uh is complete. Maybe she can just send those to you.
I I apologize for that, Mrs. Kidman. I'll I'll look at see.
That's okay. Well, that that's why I'm asking because I can't see what you're showing.
Okay, so um out of the one hundred and seventy, so for this last year, out of the one hundred and seventy seven. Uh certified staff, we had twenty nine uh separate with us. Uh the year prior, we had one hundred and seventy one and twenty five. And then the year prior to that was one seventy two and thirty four. So we've we've maintained a a. A relatively lower number of separating employees, although it's not as low as we'd like to see. It is definitely lower than previous years where it was in the the fifties and mid forties.
Okay, question then. Um is the twenty nine? So where where's the actual percentage of turnover?
Um I so I don't.
Twenty nine plus seven plus one, right?
So it would be twenty, it would be total, so one seventy seven or twenty nine divided by one seventy seven.
So twenty, almost twenty one percent turnover last year. Okay.
Doctor. Percentages to that and then resend that back through uh so that we we can see percentages across numbers. Absolutely.
Doctor Mauer, with the incentive, I and I did like that idea. If there any other type of incentive that you guys are currently uh thinking about. Um especially when you bring on new uh uh teachers and everything, maybe some type of housing incentive. For the first year or so or something like that to help retention. Do you have any other ideas out there?
So for the initial recruitment, if you are in state, there is a seven hundred and fifty dollar relocation. Uh stipend that's that's given to them. Uh if it is out of state, that's fifteen hundred to help offset some of those moving costs. And initial setups. Uh there is not a current um there is not a current uh uh. Retention stipend. Uh we did have those in the past, uh but those those are very expensive. Because it's all staff that you would be working to retain. Uh so when you're looking at about three hundred and fifty employees. Uh that that multiplies very quickly. One of the things we, you know, we do know, uh and this has been something that we've been working on. Is the the mentoring program, when we look at teachers specifically. Making sure they're connected to a person on their campus. Uh we're checking in with them every month. We're going through professional development with them. Uh moving that into the second and third year. Uh and then. One thing I think that that we've we've worked hard is when we go on these recruiting trips. We're we're taking individuals with us, uh but we're 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 making sure they understand what page is about and what where page is. Prior to just recruiting anyone. Uh and then they get here and and we've seen this, uh when we look back. Let me go back here. We've seen some of the really, really high turnover. Uh and so the ability to start bringing that down even further is something that we're gonna continue to work towards.
Uh Boardman, any any other questions or comments, Board?
Yeah, I'm concerned about our turnover again.
Yep.
Um anything above fifteen percent is concerning. So hope well, should be interesting. Okay, thank you.
Okay, hey, uh anything further? Yeah, go ahead.
The question.
Yes.
Uh Doctor Ma Ma Ma, I think you came after I was brought to serve on the board. At that time, I had talked a little bit about grooming your own. Teachers. And I had asked for how many teachers do we have that are being challenged by the state tests? That has been challenging for these teachers to pass. What's the status on that? I know that we got some. Administrators are in the position to. Teach and help these teachers are that are being challenged to pass the state teacher tests. Do you have any idea on how many we might have in those in that category? And what we can do to help them? To pass the tests.
Yes, ma'am. That's a that's a very good question and that that is um that is out there. The state tests. Are one avenue with which in a teacher can be certified. Uh we do have other options now where they can use coursework. So let's say they're taking a certain amount of classes at Northern Arizona University. They pass those courses. That would be equal then to the test. Uh or they can show competency in the classroom or subject matter. Uh where they would do that over the course of a year or two. Uh their evaluations would be uh part of that. And then a letter would be written for them and then they could. Get that in lieu of the test as well. So there's a couple of extra avenues that have opened up. Uh that we have used uh this in the previous years to to alleviate some of that. Uh and then the majority of the, well, the majority of the in-state programs. And out-of-state programs are now aligned to when the student completes the coursework. The certificate is attached to that completion. So the the tests are now embedded inside of the coursework. So we don't see exactly the the level of teachers struggling to pass the tests. Uh and then if we do have one in particular, we definitely work with them, but. My office, working with the with the teachers, getting them certified, uh we look at multiple avenues that would best fit that teacher.
Because we are just so in our need of. Teachers, especially with the population that we're serving, that was just my concern that I have.
Yes. Yeah, and I I would be um I would be remiss to tell you uh that we uh were were actually excited to tell you that. Uh we have uh and in the past year, so last year and this year, we have one hundred percent of our staff. Certified as teachers. We are working to get them appropriately certified, uh but that is a process in itself. Uh when I stepped into the Page Unified School District, we had sixteen teachers. Uh that were not certified or even appropriately certified to be in the positions they were in. So we've made leaps and bounds uh to get to where we're at today. Uh and that that's a lot of hard work on our administrators, hard work on the supports around the teachers. Uh it's not one person that does it. It's it's a real team effort and a real focus uh of our school district.
What about our paraprofessional? How many are close to getting their certification? Would you know that?
Yeah, that's a that's a great question. I I I would like to add that question on to the next presentation, maybe in November or December. Uh because I know we've been working with some of our paraprofessionals uh on their associate's degrees. Which would then move them into possibly a bachelor's in teaching. Uh so I could definitely get those numbers for you for. Uh a a later presentation when we look at the the classified staff uh turnover. But how many of them are moving towards the teaching ranks and where are they currently at? But I do know we have four right now that are are really close to becoming teachers for us.
Good to know. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Miss McCarry. That's that was the those are good uh good points to make and uh. I like everybody else, I read about uh the impact of COVID on our teaching staffs. And that's across the board. Uh and it's it's challenging, especially those that have been in teaching for a while. And so it's gonna be interesting what the numbers are. After this year, uh because it's it's been a real challenge for everybody for sure. Any other comments or or questions from anybody?
Donut, one quick thing. Um I I was going to add that that exact comment that you made. Uh to maybe a a November or December uh work study. Uh just to see what the impacts of COVID have been to our teaching ranks and our and our all of our staffing ranks.
Yep.
It is it is an impact. We we have to recognize it.
Definitely so. All right, thank you, Doctor Mauer. Appreciate it very much.
You're welcome.
Look forward to your updates. All right, let's move on to item F. Uh and that that's a discussion review of Director of Indian Education Job Description. Uh Mr. Wallen.
Uh Mr. President, members of the board, I uh like to share with you a proposal for a. Uh the job description uh for the Director of Indian Education, if that's what we wanna call it. That's still up in the air as. As I look at this, but basically I've taken the the responsibilities and expanded them. Uh dramatically in a different direction, rather than just running the JOM program, the Title VI program. I'm asking if this is the title that we want and that's it could be coordinator instead of director. And understand the word coordinator and director has to do with salary expectations. So that's something uh that I will come back with at the next meeting uh when we make the uh recommendation. And then the position summary, I wanna revise that position statement. Um when I go down and evaluate the essential duties and responsibilities. There's some words that are miss missing. And so what I have added is the first one is to provide expertise. To infuse culturally responsive education to meet the academic, social, and emotional needs of Native American students. So one of the key criteria in this position is to be able to look at culturally responsive education. Is to look at the the leading the development of Navajo Language History Government classes. Because that also leads to what we call the Chief Manulito Pathway, uh which is a a scholarship. You know, my son had that scholarship. It's seven thousand dollars a year for about as long as you wanna go to school up to your doctorate. And uh we need to be more uh more students preparing for that. I haven't even given a. A KPI, a key performance objective, to the high school support services team that I would like to see a minimum of twenty. Uh as chief manulito scholarships this year. And so they should be in the process of identifying students. And can getting them in that in that uh pathway for preparing for career and college editing readiness. There's also other um you know. Scholarships out there, but that's one that that is very unique to um a large group of our population. And the other the other thing is this is Navajo Language History and Government. Um it's interesting that we start Navajo Language in sixth grade. Uh when we know that language is acquired in preschool and first kindergarten, first and second. And so one of the proposals I'll be working on, if we can find the funding, is to expand our Navajo Language Program down to preschool. It would be very appropriate, given our student population and especially our student population in preschool. To look at a immersion program for for preschool. So some of those things that this position would work on. Is to look at those um development of the language uh program and then look at new funding sources to support that. Uh supervised development, implementation, and monitoring and coordination of specifically two programs, the JOM and the Title. Six Grants as outlined by District Tribal and. as outlined by District, Tribal, and Federal Regulations. And look at that as, as how those programs work and bring them out of their silos. That's one of the issues that I've talked to the board about in the beginning is, is breaking the silos. Developmentally, parent involvement projects to assist students. And as you heard Ryan talking about, parent involvement is now even more critical than it ever has been with the virtual environment and the providing that classroom, providing that home office, putting those things together for kids. So becoming an expert in that, again, culturally responsive education, but also culturally responsive academic enrichment, native, Navajo language instruction, culturally responsive counseling, and culturally responsive professional development. So those are some of the pieces that I've added. And there works with and designated committees to provide information input representing both the beliefs of the district and the Native American community. So those are some of the pieces, a development of communication plan. And then working on, you know, the JOM grant with the IEC and then Title VI. And one other point I want to draw your attention to is going over the qualifications that this could be potentially a administrator, could be a teacher on, on special assignment. But I have added, put the requirements at a minimum, bachelor's degree in education or in public administration or related field as one of the, the minimum requirements. So minimally, they must have a bachelor's degree. And also that they must be bilingual preferred, but we would like to see that to be required. And then obviously, grant writing experience. So these are some of the proposals I put together with the idea, number one, I need to revise the position statement as I've gone through a little bit more. And then look cleaning up a few other pieces of language in here. So I'm prepared to ask questions. This is looking at what that would look like. Remember, we have, I guess, the Director of Indian Education, we have that, that office. But we also have a Director of Support Services, which is another district office that, that deals with students as well. And looking at how to meld those together so they work together and providing the needs for our students. So just some of the pieces in there to look at. Once the board has approved this in your October meeting, I intend to share this with the Indian Education Committee. If they want to have some input into this, then I would be bringing this back in October for your approval. And then we would start the recruitment process. Questions I can answer for you.
Board members?
One of my concerns here in financially, can we really afford to go this route at this time financially also? And will this role not only support one culture, but all of those minority cultures also?
That's a good question. First of all, this is an existing position. This is a result of retirement of the recent director. So it's not, not a new position and not a new salary. But yes, that's a good question. And that would then change the role a little bit more. I guess when you're looking at culturally responsive education, that would be for all of our minority students. But remember that our Native American students are not a minority, they're majority. And so that kind of turns that around. But we do have Hispanics and we do have some Orientals. Did I say that right? In that respect. So, yes. And that may be that I need to, to focus on the concepts of culturally responsive education. But I still want them to work on native language instruction and those pieces as well.
Exactly. I agree with you.
Yes, ma'am.
We have several other border towns schools like Holbrooke, Winslow, Flagstaff. They also have JOM, right?
Correct.
So have you looked at their job description as far as what they do in serving their communities?
No, I have not, but I can do that and have that.
It'd be kind of interesting.
In October. I can pull their job descriptions as well as the scope of duties, yes. Oh, okay. I can pull that up. Thank you. Good point. Well, and, and as far as I'm concerned, the best JOM person was Evelyn McGay in Gennado. So that's a one I should probably pull as well. She did the most fantastic job of community involvement and community engagement and was well-recognized throughout Navajo Nation for her efforts in that area.
Okay, good. Good, good. Any other board members, comments, questions? So good first run, and then yeah, some good comments by, by our board. So thank you so much. All right, let's go ahead and move on to item G, discussion item, bus driver shortage. Mr. Wallen. Dr. Ma.
Dr. Ma, yeah.
Good evening again, Governing Board President, Governing Board members. I tried to fix the lighting as best I could. When we talk about seeing the screen here, bus drivers help wanted. We, we're looking at, and Mr. Wallen's going to speak to the phased approach to coming back to school with your guys' approval. We look at how many routes we have, how many current bus drivers we have, what the mitigation strategy for riding the buses would be. And in the context of all of that, we know we are going to need somewhere between seventeen and about twenty-five bus drivers. When we currently started this project about two and a half, three weeks ago, we were looking at having about nine bus drivers currently. And so we've started aggressively recruiting. And in this context, when we think about where we were at then to where we're at now, we now have thirteen bus drivers. We signed another bus driver today. We have two, possibly three more in the works. So we are getting there. It's a slow process to, to build a bus driver from a person who comes off the street, does not have a commercial driver's license, does not have the appropriate endorsements. You're looking at a forty-five to sixty-day process. It can be fast-tracked, but you know, you're, you're talking about transporting students. So we'd want to make sure we're looking at quality there, not just the speed with which we can get credentials in place. So some of the emergency, or not emergency, the immediate fixes, we're looking at what would, what would it take to put some substitute bus drivers in? So they would still need the appropriate endorsements, they would still need all the moving parts that our bus drivers need and all bus drivers need. But instead of making them employees, full-time employees with the PAGE Unified School District, we would look at using them as substitutes, much like we do our current substitute pool for our teachers, for our custodial staff. And then in that, if they want to transition into a full-time position or a part-time position, we could definitely start to groom them in. But we know with much of our substitute pool, when it's the teachers or even any of our other staff, that most of the time, it's either a second job or they're a retired individual or they're financially independent and like to give back to the community. So that substitute pool may not be the best for a long-term fix, but it definitely could help. Contract out. So I've, I've made some phone calls with some local agencies on what would it look like to, what would it look like and what would costs look like for us to contract for five bus drivers, for ten bus drivers? I'll have some of those numbers as we move into the next governing board meeting, so that you have some specifics around that. And then the last one, the shift in ability, really thinking about current individuals who have CDLs. But what would it take to, to, to use that CDL that they currently have in the bus driving pool? So that's a much quicker turnaround than just, just building a brand-new bus driver from scratch. Long-term fixes, this is what will come back in, in October. And if you do think back, just a year ago, we did adjust this pay structure. It had significant impact. We, we were able to bring in five, six, seven additional bus drivers. But with COVID, we've seen all of our, all of our employees, we've seen some, some issues there. So what would a pay structure look like for bus drivers? And what would that do taking us forward? Could we continue the substitute plan? And we would just have to be mindful, like we're with our other substitutes, how many hours they can work. Because there's more constraints around driving a bus and using a CDL than just, than just substituting a classroom. And then some partnerships. We, I was working with our community and then Coconino Community College. They are bringing online CDL class. So myself and Helene, our Transportation Director, are going to meet with the Coconino Community College. They start a new class here pretty soon. And what would it look like to take a brand-new person in that class, move them through that, and then be able to say at the end of the CDL, you would have a job with PAGE Unified School District if you chose to become a bus driver with us? So those are some of the things we've got going on. Our target is seventeen bus drivers for the short term, and then the long term, we're looking at twenty to twenty-five fully working bus drivers.
Board members. All I know is this has always been a challenge. And there's a, it looks like you, you're swimming down a lot of different lanes now, which is good and, and kind of outside the box that we've seen. And to tell Larry, I almost missed the bus that we used to park out near the stop, stoplight that said, "We are hiring bus drivers." I mean, a banner right all the way across the bus. But anyway, this, this looks good, Derek.
And just, just for, that'll be rolling out pretty shortly.
Okay, okay. I was missing it. I was missing it.
We're looking for the sign, sir.
Oh, okay. All right, good. Any other comments? Just keep working, man. And I'll tell you what, it's, it's coming up. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone.
Next thing up, review of policy, BAA discussion. And again, as you know, October is our evaluation period. And Mr. Wallen, you're on the button for this? Or more discussion for the board?
Just to, to start off the discussion, one of the things I'd like to do is to take your, the board self-evaluation and turn that into a Google Doc so that we can then send that to you. You can sit down and, and push the buttons of, as exceeds, meets, and needs more work. And then it will automatically tabulate all this, as some of the things like you heard Ryan say. That was really my piece, was to put this together and computerize this so that it's much easier to do. And, and then proceed with that process. And if the, if the board's, doesn't have a problem with that, I'll go ahead and, and ask our highly competent data analysis person to go ahead and.
Yeah, I think that's your data analysis person looking at you saying, "You gotta be kidding me." No.
And put this into a Google survey.
All right. Very good. You want to, you want to save us all that ciphering?
I do.
Okay, good. Yeah, we were, we were ciphering way too much. Any other comments, board members? And so do you understand what he's saying? Just, just computerize this whole thing. This is a tool we've used before. And, and I'm, everyone's saying, "Okay, let's get done with this meeting."
Yes.
All right. I, I don't see any other comments, so let's go ahead and, and move on. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. So board says, let it be done. Item A, I mean, I, Navajo Technical University, IGA, Mr. Wallen.
Mr. President, members of the board, this is to ask the board at your October meeting to approve an IGA for dual enrollment with Navajo Technical College. And we want to do, we want to create Navajo Government and Navajo Language as college-level courses so that the students, again, have that hook to move down that, that Chief Manulito path. And so it's just, it's, it'll be that agreement. And that's the two, two pieces in there that we want to add at this point. Now, there may be other courses down the road that we want to put in that, that dual enrollment program so that, again, that's one of the things I've tasked the high school support staff with, is increasing number of kids who are graduating with their first year of college completed. And then even beginning to look at graduating kids who have the first two years of college completed as we go along. And the nice thing, and the reason we went to Navajo Technical University is because they don't charge any fees for the kids to take the government class and the Navajo Language class. And our teacher is on board, he's getting his credentials ready so that he can, he'll be a part of that, that dual enrollment process. Thank you.
So they'll be able to take it here?
Correct.
I mean, it'll be in, in class or types or online, either way?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Good, good find, good get. I think this is really, really important for our kids. So thank you so much. Appreciate it. Item J, discussion reopening of school COVID-19 update and the, with the need for the special meeting on September 20th, Mr. Wallen.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm sharing with you, first of all, my most recent Covert, Coconino County Schools update in, in preparation for, as we make decisions along. And this is based on, as you can see here, the Governor's Three Metrics that have been established. And you can see that we're in the green for PAGE as we move forward. Now, we also did a webinar today, or I'm sorry, yeah, virtual, I guess, virtual hour, every Monday, was today, Tuesday. Every Tuesday, I do a one-hour virtual conversation with the Navajo Division of Education, DNA Education. And today, we also, that, and that comes into this data as well, as we look at that. And I'm sorry to say that right now, the report is that the, 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 what's it, positivity is up and that the, the spread is up. And so I'll know, I'll have this report Tuesday from the county. They give us one every week. And so if you go down and look, you can see that this was August 30th. So we're still missing, while it says September eighteenth, we've got data ending up September 12th. And so this is one of the, one of the metrics that we'll be using. And, and Thursday, I believe, Wednesday, when do we, Friday, when do we meet the CWC?
Friday.
Twenty-fifth. When we, the CWC, this is, again, we'll have more current data to, to review with them, as well as data from the Navajo Nation in relation to that. We are aggressively pursuing a return-to-school plan based on what's happening. And I have to un, yeah, let me stop sharing. And then let me go back and share the, the next one. And we met all day Friday. And as you know, we've been meeting and meeting and meeting and meeting on this. And it continues to be revised every day as we go forward. But as our onsite support has increased, we're running about seventy to seventy-five students in onsite, on support, onsite support per the Governor's Order. We are looking at, at the effect of that and how that's working. So I tasked my security director, Josh, to go over and watch what those guys are doing and replicate that a thousand times. Because when we actually return to campus and go to campuses, we need to do the same process, the same check-in process, the same temperature checks, and so on and so forth. So this is kind of the, the pathway to the B District and connections to reopening schools. So September 3rd, we met with the CDC. And one of the critical pieces is they said, if you come back to school, we believe it might be good to look at fifty percent of the students present on, on any given day. And so then on September the 11th, we met and we began to plan on September 18th. We're still planning, looking at more pieces. September 22nd, that was the Instructional Leadership Team. September 22nd is this work-study session. And then we've got meetings planned. September 24th, we're going to be meeting with our Navajo chapter officials to look at this. And we're going to have a presentation with Dr. Hugh, who is the pediatrician from Tubus City IHS. And I just was emailing with her back and forth today. One of the areas that I want her to talk about, and we want to stress to everyone, is how to protect your family, how to prepare your family to come to school. You know, now you need those self-checks to be taking place at home as a relation to that. And so then we meet with the CDC the 25th. Then I am requesting that we continue that, that we definitely have that September 28th governing board meeting where we look strictly at the reopening plan and what that's going to look like. Governing board meeting where we look strictly at the reopening plan and what that's going to look like. We had originally suggested October sixth as a possible re-opening date, reopening date. With our meeting Friday, when we looked at very broad details. We wrote another seventeen-page document on reopening, done great work by Josh. Our security director and Brian Henderson, a phenomenal person who put together a checklist. So we met all day working on that and we came up with. This plan that we will be fleshing out in more detail for you to consider with an opening date of October twelfth. And if, depending on our guidelines, if it was, if today was October twelfth, I would say, no, we're not going to open. The trends are up in a lot of areas. Arizona is now going back up to a red state. And so, but that's three weeks away. So we need to watch and see where that goes. We are also at this point. And I thought I put that in here, do, 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 do. We are conducting. Oh, did I share it? Yeah, okay. We are also conducting another survey of our families, a very aggressive survey to say, would you want to return virtually? Do you want to return online? Do you want to return hybrid? And so the proposal that we're considering recommending the board looks like this. And what we're saying is we want to come back in a hybrid. But fan, hybrid model. Respecting the fifty percent capacity. That the C W C came, came in with, but also the fact that we're down some bus drivers. And so we looked at a plan that says we would come back. Monday, Tuesday would be A group and C group. They would be onsite. Where B and D group would be virtual. Wednesday would be virtual deep cleaning day as a result of two days of occupancy in the building. And then Thursday and Friday would be B group and D group would be fully onsite while A and C group. Would be virtual. So what that means is you would have the opportunity to have three days of virtual. And two days of onsite in, in, in a week's time, if that's the way. We end up putting that together. So the groups look like this. Group A would be all the students living along Highway ninety-eight, Route sixteen and twenty-one. Which we, based on our student information system, believe is about four hundred and ninety-two students. A group B will be Copper Mile, Lachiee, Greenhaven, Walweep and Highway eighty-nine, which would be about four hundred and ninety-one students. Then we were, we are working on a division of group C and D and that's in town. And that's one thousand three hundred and fifty-one students. I'm told that there was a street. And I don't remember the name of it, that used to separate Desert View and Lakeview when they were K five each. Remember the name? What is it? Barrels or something? Arrow. As a possible demarcation line to divide the in-town students and group C's and D. Using that same demarcation that was in effect when Desert View and Lakeview were. K five. And so putting that together and looking at. What this would look like and detailing it out even further, we met again today to discuss this. And we're continuing to, to aggressively pursue planning. The issue is if we don't plan, we won't get there. But the issue is if we're going to get there, we got to plan. And so they go hand in hand. I'm not guaranteeing to you that I would recommend that on October twelfth, we start school, but right now, based on the metrics. They, yesterday, I was pretty positive about it. But today, as I've got new additional information, I'm not so positive about it, but we'll see where it goes. So September twenty-second through the twenty-fifth. We will be doing a survey that is being emailed out to the community, to parents. It's on. The website, it's on School Messenger, it's on all kinds of venues to get out. And then we have a team of teachers. And staff that are going to be working in the afternoons during the twenty-second, twenty-fifth, following up on. People who have not responded to the survey. So our goal is to get as many responses as we can. Our goal is to get a hundred percent. But, and so we're going to do everything we can to get that information out. To, so that, that parents can understand. We can get their preferences and then we'll see if our fifty percent model is gonna, is gonna balance out with what's happening. Always understand. That basically. Excuse me, that virtually you can always maintain virtually. If I'm a parent who I want my kid home with me the whole time, I want to say ultra-safe, then they could be virtual five days a week. Or they can come two days a week to school. So that, that's kind of the model. If they want to go totally distant learning. Then sage and sand would be the, the choice that they could follow six through twelve. So that's some of the things that are looking out there, but always remember. And, and I say this over and over and again, because it's, it's not something we're used to is if you want to keep your child virtual, please do so. You don't have to send them back to school unless you're, you're prepared to do that. And so we'll have by the. Twenty-eighth, we should have the survey data as additional data points to look at. We will have a new county school update as I showed you before. And then we'll have a new update from the Navo Nation. I know. Today they're going back into lockdown, right? On the weekends. Yeah, and I, Abraham do the meeting for me today because I was in a planning session here. And they said that the president's going to put them back into full lockdown on the weekends. And some more restrictions like that to get back and mitigate the circumstances. If you're watching the news, you see that Arizona is, is moving. Into a spread and as, as back as a red state right now. So again, to be planning, I mean, moving forward with everything. At the twenty-eighth meeting, I'll have. A checklist that is like we put together, show you that all the stuff that we're doing to. Get ready for, for school. And we'll also have the handbook that we've also go in with that checklist. So this is what I want you to think about between now and the twenty-eighth. Talk to people, look at it. If, if the, the model's unclear, then come and see me. Or any of the principals, we all participated in developing this. And this would probably continue till January and then in, in December, we would reevaluate. Do we want to come back fully onboard on, you know, on, on the ground kind of a thing? So we're anticipating that this would run possibly from October twelfth. It could run from, I mean, the whole year. Depends on. You know, there's always rumors out there of vaccinations and all that kind of stuff, but it could run even the whole year. But right now we're looking at a fifty percent capacity hybrid model to move forward with. Questions I can answer for you. I probably talked too fast, too.
Board members. Okay, I don't see anybody responding, but this is going, this is, he made this very concise. And as he said, on this twenty-eighth. We'll get the full plan so that we can, we can see everything laid out. But once again, great job by the staff to put things together. Because I know you guys have been working really, really hard in addition to the other things that they're doing. So appreciate that a lot. All right. Last item, future district newsletter articles. And I just, I wanted to put this on here just because in the last newsletter, I didn't see any, any article by the board. And Lynn had given us a plan. And we've run right by that plan and just haven't even listened to it. Because I do think it's important, and I think we all do, that, that the board has an opportunity to. Express themselves concerning your thoughts on the school and various things like that and, and a lot of encouraging words and things. So anyway. And Lynn, are you, are you there? Are you on somewhere? You're not on, you're muted? That's the first time she's muted. No.
But no, 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 Ed's going to take the November newsletter.
So Ed's going to take the November?
Yes.
All right, good.
And he'll share that out at the October study session.
Right.
And somebody needs to take the October newsletter.
Okay.
Mr. President, also. I'm sorry. Also, if you want to do a video, we can set you up to do a video versus writing.
If anybody would like to do that, yeah.
Yeah. Sorry, Sandra.
Go ahead.
I just, I don't know. Do we have to have something from a board member every single month?
Absolutely.
What?
Yes. We want to hear.
Just one board member.
That means that you might have, you might put something in twice in a year.
Okay, but the, the whole page thing. I mean, I don't know, I don't know about you, but I, you, I know you and I differ in opinion on this. But when, when I write a piece, I want it to be highly polished. And that takes hours and hours of time.
Yeah.
And. Yeah.
Start working on, you, you, start working on your newsletter for Christmas. How's that?
And remember, Ms. Kidman, remember, we have a public relations person who is an English major and a published author and.
Yeah, no, I, no, I.
He can help you polish it up.
I realize that, but even so, I don't, you know, I don't know, maybe we could, do we want to maybe coordinate topics that we want to talk about?
Oh, we could. I mean, that's, that's up to the board. You know.
I don't know. I, I personally struggle and somebody says, just write an article.
Let's make a video. Let's do a video.
No.
See, there you go. Hey, you know, again, it's, this isn't a mandatory thing, but I. I think we should have somebody from the board, you know, in a, in a column or a video or something like that. Because we are part of the, we are a part of the population.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not, I, I like, I like the overall idea. And I think. I, I have enjoyed the articles I've read from my fellow board members.
Yeah, so we totally agree.
So no, I'm not in disagreement. I'm just, I'm just questioning the frequency, the length and the topics of the articles.
That's all, that's up to the author. I mean, if you want to write one paragraph or if you want to do a little short video. And you worked that out with Steve as well. So I mean, you know, you have full latitude in terms of that. Because.
And I can give you.
Okay, well, that's good to know because last time I was told, I need, you need to run an article by this time and it has to be a minimum of this many words.
Now that.
And I was like, and I was like, okay, I'm back in college, so no thanks.
Now, see, that doesn't sound like anything I would say.
No, I didn't say it was you.
Okay, just checking.
I, I can give you lots of topics.
See, there you go.
See, okay, that's my point, I guess, is if I need to know, how much do I write, by when do I write it and kind of a topic? Because just kind of pulling, I don't, I, I would like a little more.
That's totally in your basket.
Like a little more cohesion even, you know, that I thought that when we, you know, we're supposed to have. Every time I go to these A S B A seminars, I, I hear this, you're supposed to have a communication strategy. Well, yeah, you know, we're supposed to be shooting in the same direction, going in the same direction.
Sure, sure.
So if I just write some crazy off the my head kind of article. Has nothing to do with anything. It doesn't really serve a purpose.
There, you're, you're muted. You're muted.
I would be happy to work with you on that because I, as I've talked with you, I can see some great topics that you, that would really appeal to parents.
But what I, what I'd like to do to clarify a lot of this is Lynn has a process that, that with, she actually laid in front of us and we said, yay, that's the way we should, we should do it. So Lynn, if you wouldn't mind, let's refresh the board and it, it should be on the board agenda for a work-study session. That's where we have the discussion in terms of who's going to do what. And, and that kind of thing. So, but nobody's forcing anybody to do anything. Okay? Let's put it, let's put it that. And, but anyway, I just think it's, it's great to hear from the board. So. Everyone wants to hear what you guys have to think and say, and that's, that's a good, it's a good place to do it. Okay? So Lynn, you'll do that for us? And I see her shaking. I think that's you behind the mask. Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, any other comments on that? And we'll just have her put that schedule and we'll have a conversation when that's up and ready to go. Well, we are at the favorite part of our agenda.
I make a motion to adjourn at seven twenty-nine. And I second that motion.
Motion and second, all favors say aye, 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 aye. Okay, thank you very much. We are adjourned.